I'd like to welcome all of you here for this March the 24th, 2022 city council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk who's present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices at this time. With that, I call this meeting to order, and we would like to ask that everyone please stand for the invocation. I'd like to impass- invite Pastor David Nye, Pastor of the Christ Our Savior Fellowship, who will come and lead our invocation. Please remain standing after the invocation before the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we take time now to say thank you, Lord, for another day of life. We thank you for the blessings that each of us have received today. Now, Lord, as the leaders of our city come together to discuss, deliberate, and decide the different issues that come before them, we ask that your wisdom be bestowed upon each member of this body, and that all decisions made here this evening would be pleasing and honoring to you. And we ask this in the name of our precious Lord and Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Nye. Please show me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May he be seated. Madam clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here. Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, sir. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to add a proclamation in recognition of Water Conservation Month.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. There you are. Come on up. Your family's welcome to join you if they like. You're gonna do a solo job, huh? All right. Whereas Jeremy Fletcher is a 15-year-old St. Cloud High School student who has been racing go-karts for 11 years. That's almost he came out of the cradle doing that, man. Whereas in 2021, Jeremy made history by being the only second driver to ever be driver of the month twice in the same year by eKartingNews.com. And whereas Jeremy secured his first KA100 Junior Division Super Nationals victory and pulled double duty that same day, competing also in his X30 Junior OTK Go Kart and winning that race by four-second margin. And whereas with his two victories on Super Sunday, Jeremy joined four-time supranational winner Connor DePhillips as the only driver to win two separate main events at the same supranationals event. And whereas Jeremy is halfway to the top of the all-time win list with drivers who have won four victories at the supranationals, and whereas Jeremy moved up to the senior level at the World Karting Association Daytona Kart Week at the end of 2021, competing in the KA100 Senior Division and winning his first senior victory. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of St. Cloud, do hereby issue this proclamation recognizing Jeremy Fletcher for his outstanding achievements in go-kart racing, all while keeping up with his honors classes at the St. Cloud High School, and we congratulate him on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Cloud. Congratulations.
I would just like to say thank you to the city of St. Cloud and all the city council members, and also my family.
If you, I imagine most of you saw his go-kart coming in. A little bit different than the go-kart I used to have. It was all them a little piece of metal and my brakes were my tennis shoes. At this time, we have a proclamation in recognition of St. Cloud Elementary Robotics Team to Ms. Mary Yaklick and Dwayne Norman. Would you please come forward? And do you have a team here with you? You've got the whole crew here. I'm intimidated with all these smart kids up here. Hmm, it's going pretty good. You ready? Some candy? Whereas students in the robotics program at St. Cloud Elementary School have qualified to compete in the VEX Robotics World Competition in Dallas, Texas. This may, and whereas VEX Robotics teaches students engineering principles, coding skills, and teamwork. And whereas students design and build a robot that can complete the necessary skills needed for each year's game. And whereas this year's game is called Pitching In, and students earn points in individual skill competitions and in teamwork matches. And whereas skill matches require students to drive the robot, and the robot must operate autonomously. And whereas students are interviewed by judges about the engineering aspects of their robots. And whereas this program is helping to develop the scientists, engineers, and computer programmers of tomorrow. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby issue this proclamation in recognition of the achievements of the St. Cloud Elementary Robotics Team to let them know how proud the citizens of St. Cloud are of their achievements and to wish them well in Dallas. Congratulations, gentlemen, and we have a proud.
So, as a professional engineer myself, when I heard about your achievement, I was super jealous that I wasn't able to compete. And I reached out to the city manager and fellow council members, and I said, is there something we can do to help support them on your journey to Dallas? And we're proud to provide to you guys a check for $5,000 to help with the cost of your trip. And best of luck.
You said stand up? At this time, we have a proclamation in recognition of Water Conservation Month to Mary Cox. And I assume you're assistant there, right? Whereas water is a basic need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida, water management districts, Toho Water Authority, and the cities of St. Cloud and Kissimmee are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas April is typically a dry month when water demands are high, and is therefore a good time to educate citizens about how they can help save our precious water resources. And whereas the city of St. Cloud and the city of Kissimmee are participating in the mayor's water challenge to encourage water conservation, and whereas the city of St. Cloud has always encouraged water conservation through educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen make a difference by efficiently using water, thus promoting a healthy community. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of St. Cloud, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. The city of St. Cloud, Florida, is calling upon each citizen and each business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. And with that, would you like to say something?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Cox, and I have Rodney Tilly here. We both work with Toho Water Authority in our water conservation department. So tonight, we would definitely like to thank the council for recognizing April as Water Conservation Month. We look forward to partnering with the city of Kissimmee during the month of April to help educate and inform our customers and residents about the importance of water conservation, and we truly believe everyone can be a water hero. So, thank you.
Awesome. This is Marjorie Craig.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Craig. I'm the Environmental Utilities Director, and as you know, we partner with Toho on many things, and we'll be integrating in October. And I left my shirt on my desk, which was not very useful, but we're looking so forward to working with Toho on Water Conservation Month this month and in the future. So, thank you very much for your health, help, and support.
I was kindly reminded that Toho Water Authority actually has a contest going on for our new mascot, so if you guys want to check out our Facebook page, tomorrow it does end, but we would love to hear the local children's ideas for the name of our mascot. We are very excited about it and look forward to the reveal later next month. So, check it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I asked the mayor if I could say something too. So, I'm also a professional engineer, and I'm very jealous about the robotics thing. I saw the check earlier in Amy's office, and I'm just, I'm just so proud. You guys are awesome. And I'm from Dallas, so I'll be watching.
At this time, we have the presentation for the Employee of the Month by Stephanie Holtkemp and Erin Jenks.
I'm Erin Jenks with the Parks and Recreation Department, and I would like to read to you the nomination we gave for our employee of the month. The following was received to Parks and Recreation Department from Officer Furtick. So, on February 18th, 2022, at approximately 2,000 hours, our employee made contact with an elderly female that had been missing for approximately three hours. The female was wandering about the Hopkins Park area when our employee noticed her. She was, my employee was able to tend to the missing woman, give her water. She contacted the St. Cloud Communications PD Department and got 911 to come and help. And she stayed on and helped find, get in touch with this woman's daughter and have that reunification, and again, worked with PD, so we were really proud of her. This employee is Christina St. Louis. She is our educational program supervisor with the city of St. Cloud in our Parks and Rec Department. Christina went above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that this confused lady was, felt safe and received the care she needed and was reunited with her family. So, we're very, very proud of you, and that is why you are employee of the month.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna keep this brief because I'm not one who enjoys public speaking. However, when Erin told me that she was happy that I stayed with this, this person, I told her it was part of my job. So, I do not feel like I should be awarded for it, but I am happy that you guys decided to, and I thank you.
And I think we also have a...
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I believe we'll have a presentation in just a moment. At this time, we have a presentation by Bob DeThridge, and he will come and share that with us at this time.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council, city manager, approximately two years ago, Ms. Leanne Tomano accepted the position of Flood Plane Manager for the city of St. Cloud. At that time, I tasked her with improving our rating for the National Flood Insurance Program with the hopes of improving from a seven to a six. That being said, I will yield the floor to Ms. Tomano.
Good evening. Leanne Tomano, Flood Plane Manager for the city of St. Cloud and Building Department. So, tonight, I am privileged to share with you that the city has been awarded an improvement rating for our community rating system through the, for the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. And I'm gonna get into that rating in just a moment. I'm gonna explain what this program is. The Community Rating System, it's a voluntary program, and it provides reduction to our flood insurance premiums for our communities that go above and beyond and exceed the minimum requirements for the National Flood Insurance Program. The city of St. Cloud has been participating in this program since 1993. Our participation does the following: It reduces the cost of flood insurance for our property owners, renters, and businesses. It helps to reduce the risk of flood damage to insurable properties, buildings. It increases our community's awareness of flood risks, and it also fosters protection of our natural environment. Communities that participate in the Community Rating System program, they earn credit for carrying out activities that manage flood planes, reduce flood risk, and minimize the vulnerability of flooding. The program ranks their communities based on their participation with a scale from 1 to 10, 1 being the best possible score and 10 being the lowest score. And the city of St. Cloud is currently rated at a Class 7 community in addition to Osceola County and the city of Kissimmee. Oh, I'm sorry, Osceola County is at a 6. This provides our residents up to 15% reduction on their flood insurance premiums currently. So, as Bob mentioned, over the last two years, the city has worked very hard to improve the flood plane management program and has recently been awarded a Class 5 rating. The city's building department, along with the Public Works Department and Environmental Utilities, have worked collaboratively to make this happen. Only 18% of the communities in Florida that participate in this program have a Class 5 rating or higher. The new Class 5 rating will take effect October 1st of this year. At that time, city property owners, renters, and businesses will receive up to a 25% discount on their flood insurance premiums. So, the table before you illustrates the increase in savings, there we go, for flood insurance policyholders. Those with flood policies that are within what we call the Special Flood Hazard Area, which is our high-risk areas, will receive up to a 25% discount, and those that are outside of the Special Flood Hazard Area in lower-risk areas, sometimes named as Flood Zone X, will even receive a discount of 10%. We have just over 1,000 flood insurance policies within the city. For these policyholders, what this means is an average annual savings per policy of $83, as opposed to the original annual savings of $48. This is actually a citywide total savings of $82,600. I do want to be clear that the city does not benefit or have any affiliation with flood insurance policies. We simply carry out the National Flood Insurance Program and the Community Rating System Program to assist our community members. So, community members are welcome to contact me for more information by reaching out to the Building Department, and I'm privileged to announce this award tonight. Thank you so much.
And on behalf of the city of St. Cloud, and I'm sure all of the residents, we thank you for all of the hard work that all of the staff have put forth in making this a reality. Councilmember Matheny?
Yes, I wanted to give, Ms., I'm not used to your new last name.
Tomano.
Tomino, Ms. Tomino, and everyone at the city, a huge kudos on this because I know how hard this is. I know how much work it is. I mean, it's an amazing, amazing accomplishment that is not to be taken lightly. And good luck next year, too, because I know keeping it is quite, almost as hard as getting it. So, congratulations. It's an amazing amount of work.
Anyone else? Thank you. With that, we come to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided by the presiding officer prior to or as is soon, as is practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. When you come forward, we ask that please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Sandy Beatty? Did I pronounce that correct? Please state your name and address.
Don't start my time yet. My name is Sandy Beatty. I live at 248 Tullyse Loop. I've lived in St. Cloud and contributed to this community for over 32 years. I've raised my seven children here, and five of my 13 grandchildren still live in this community. My children went through the Osceola County school system. My oldest is currently an infectious disease doctor at the University of Florida. My youngest, Nolan, is a PhD cancer researcher at Moffitt in Tampa. And the ones all in between there contribute to our county and our state. I bought a new house in May on Tullyse Loop, and I want to play an audio of last night. Hold on one second. Pretty peaceful. That's my community of Summerly. And now I want to play an audio from my backyard from Sunday night. That's a nightmare. That was 10 o'clock at night on a Sunday night, a school night. Some of my neighbors went to bed with headphones on. Who in the city council wants to hear that from their backyard? The ranch is listed as being nestled in a 219-acre park, an event destination with complete rustic elegance. The venue offers indoor seating for up to 130 persons and an additional outdoor setting for up to 280 total people. D.R. Horton told us this location was going to be developed into a park and trails. Debbie Hastings. The previous owner of the property stated, as part of the contract, the area needs to remain a park in perpetuity. For those of you that don't know, that means lasting forever. When we hear other people step on the property and they, and they're like, wow, it's so peaceful, it's so quiet, and then they get to see the wildlife as we show them around the ranch. They love it. And that's exactly what we wanted to do, share this with that community. I'm sure the owl that I hear and the deer and the turkeys that I see did not believe it was a peaceful, quiet Sunday night. When you purchased this land, there wasn't any developments next to it. There now are currently built or expected to be built over 1,500 homes. Some of the homes on my street sold for well over $400,000. Here are my question: Who approves the permits? What are the restrictions on lighting, sound, and capacity? What endangered and protected species are living within this 219-acre wildlife area? Why are there currently three sets, when I came home today, of bleachers behind my house? If there is 219 acres, why are you allowing the music and stage to be set up directly behind these two new developments? I'm like incredibly upset about this, and something needs to change, and I'm not going to give up the fight.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Does anyone in the council have a question? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I received numerous phone calls this week about the noise levels. Sunday night, there was an event, and I've directed staff not to have any events there on Sunday night past 10 o'clock at night. I think it went on till 11:00. Is that correct?
It actually stopped at 10:38 after I got ahold of a St. Cloud police officer, I believe that knew me. You know, the point is, Sunday night, it wouldn't have mattered if it was 10 o'clock or 7 to 7:00 p.m., which is the noise time, because at 3:00 p.m. it was too loud.
So, I've asked staff to look at that and the things that the young lady's talking about with the lighting, the events, and things like that. How we can do that.
I mean, they have free light swirling about a mile in the air.
Excuse me, I was talking to the council.
Sorry.
And so, we're going to look at that and then limit those events, and I get their complaint, and we're sorry that happened. Again, it's a venue that was purchased when there wasn't houses out there. It was purchased, and to have venues out there, though, so, but we'll just be more respectful for the neighbors and limit those events.
Maybe move it to where the woods are?
Thank you, ma'am. He said he'll check into it, and we'll see what we can do.
And we'll be in touch. I want you to think we're gonna go with you.
Should I get my picture taken?
Sure, I give you my card, too. All right, thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Ma'am? He has a, he has a card for you, ma'am.
Sorry. I don't know who my people are. I lived on Virginia before, and I knew that was...
Thank you, ma'am.
As I voted for...
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Dwayne Norman?
Thank you, council. Dwayne Norman, 3551 Buckingham Court. Just wanted to say thank you for all y'all do. Thanks for supporting the kids with our robotics, and I wanted to say thank you for what you're doing in the Little League fields, or the baseball fields. They're coming along. It's getting close. And I don't know if y'all have heard the numbers. The last numbers I've heard, we have 79 teams with 950 kits. So, thanks for, for your support and keeping that rolling, and hopefully we'll be playing on some new fields soon. But thank you for all you do to support the kids.
Thank you for that encouraging word. We appreciate that, and we do care about the kids. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportu- now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items on the consent agenda that the staff are wanting to address? Would anyone in the audience like to address any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, we'll have discussion. Is this on the consent agenda?
No.
No, you've got an item coming up later, okay? At this time, we'll have a discussion and a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a second from, a motion from Councilmember Matheny, and a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next portion of tonight's meeting are public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number one?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-10. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing vacating abandoned right-of-way located at 2112 Oakview Circle specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for severability conflicts and effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Dagmar Isagara, Planning Manager. Tonight, the request before you is for the abandonment of a drainage utilities, drainage and utility easement at 22, I mean, 2112 Oakview Circle. The applicant is requesting the abandonment of a 20-foot drainage and utility easement located along the rear property boundary for construction of an in-ground swimming pool. Staff review the request, and Public Works Department requested to maintain a 5-foot easement along the rear property boundary. And a staff, DRC, also, uh, sorry, it means strategic goals of infrastructure, and DRC reviewed the request and concur with Public Works' recommendations to maintain a 5-foot easement to remain along the rear of the property, and staff recommends approval for the conditional approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is the applicant here? Would he, this applicant like to speak to this item? You going to speak to the item or not? You don't have to, no.
You don't have to.
Okay, you don't have to. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Askew. We have a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Clerk, would you read item number two?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-19. In ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, imposing a temporary moratorium for 90 days on the acceptance of any application and/or issuance of any permits, conditional use, site plan approval, and any other official action of the City of St. Cloud having the effect of permitting and allowing development, construction and/or installation of any communication towers within the City of St. Cloud as more specifically described in this ordinance, excluding was conditioned such applications submitted after February 1st, 2022, and/or approvals and permits for the continuance of the existing communication towers, and the temporary moratorium shall apply to all real property located within the city, within the corporate limits of the City of St. Cloud, providing for severability conflicts and effective date.
Hello again, Dagmar Isagara, Planning Manager. The request before you is to adopt the 90-day moratorium for the communication towers. Currently, the Land Development Code permits communication towers in I-1 and I-2A as a conditional use, and OR. The communication standards, they need to be updated to be more current, and the moratorium will allow staff to conduct research and provide updated standards for future applications. The moratorium will end on June 22nd, and a staff recommendation of, to adopt the 90-day moratorium. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. We have a second from Councilmember Askew.
So, I do have some questions, sorry.
You have a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
I didn't. It's over there, and I didn't get to it.
Well, it's kind of hard to see your light when you don't match.
So, we're just, the intent is for us to have design standards for them. Would we, would we then allow it in additional zoning districts if we have better standards? Because it's like, all the industrial areas and open space areas are in certain spots. Like, I, I think my cell coverage gets worse and worse every day.
Yeah.
Even though all this 5G and all this stuff's coming about, so I don't want this to, like, stifle adding cell towers, just, you know.
No, I, that's part of the research. We were going to make also recommendations if we should allow them in other districts, and maybe even creating some sort of a special areas for them if we don't want to allow them in specific districts. But that's part of the research. Traditionally, yes, in the past, the, that communication towers have only been approved in industrial areas, you know, in overlays. But as we know, with technology moving forward, that has changed, and so we want to keep up with the times. And now the, the standards and the designs of these towers are not what it used to be. So, there is opportunities to have them allowed in other zonings.
Okay, thank you. And I just don't like the ones that look like trees. Like I said that last time.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye, but I don't mind the trees, as long as they're in the right setting, not just by itself, but I don't, I don't mind. Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
I don't mind the trees either. And that's an aye for me.
Motion carries 5-0.
So, you're outvoting 2 to 0, 2 to 1. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please read item number three?
First public hearing for ordinance number 2022-17. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, prescribing the manner of holding the regular election to be held the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November each election year, to wit November 8, 2022, with the primary election on August 23rd, 2022, if required, pursuant to Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Cloud, providing an effective date.
I don't see anyone to speak to this. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item number four, please.
First public hearing and ordinance for 2022-20. In ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Article 3 zoning regulations, Division 18, off-street and bicycle parking loading, Division 26, non-residential architectural standards, amending Article 8 landscaping and tree protection, Division 5 landscaping, providing for applicability and effect severability, scrivener's errors, conflict, copies on file, and effective date.
Good evening again. Let's see if it's as easy as it was the other two. Dagmar Isagara, Planning Manager. Tonight's request is the first reading to adopting, to, for the first reading of some amendments to the Land Development Code to Article 3 and Article 8. The purpose of these amendments is to address concern by the City Council members. Part of the amendments as well is to ensure that future residential development will positively contribute to the built environment and aesthetics of the city, and to promote high-quality architectural designs, among other amendments. The first amendment is to Article 8, which is the zoning regulations, Division 18, which pertains to off-street parking, bicycle parking, and loading. This amendment will add a note under Table 3-8 that will read that no off-street parking except in designated parking areas. The second, the follow, the next amendment is to Division 20, and in this amendment, we are proposing to add language that pertains to air conditioning paths to be 10 feet staggered to provide and allow for drainage and accessibility. Now, this is the new, the bigger amendment to Division 26. Division 26, right now, refers to non-residential architectural standards. Staff is proposing to change the title to just architectural standards, because we are proposing new section of 3.2, 6.2, which is going to be the new residential standards. The intent of the standards are going to be to establish reasonable design for new residential development, and to ensure that future residential development will contribute to the environment and aesthetics of the city, and to promote high-quality architectural, in an effort to be more livable, sustainable, and well-designed community. The amendment also, the new section will also have allowances for applicability. This, this, this code, the residential design standards, would apply to single-family detached residents, duplexes, single-family attached, including townhomes, existing residential development if they're making additions more than 50% of the existing, and to preliminary subdivisions planned, plan unit development, preliminary master plan, and site development plan that includes residential developments as well. It also provides for exemptions. We're exempting the areas that has already specific standards, such as historic downtown. We are excluding multifamily apartments and condominiums, because we're going to implement the non-residential architectural standards for those products. And, and the city may require designs, design standards that exceed the requirements on PUDs, on plan unit developments. It also gives allowance for deviations. If an applicant wants to pursue a deviation from any of these standards, the deviation process will be through the City Council, and it will have to meet the existing requirements that are the non-residential architectural standards, which, you know, the conditions exceed, that are not the results to the applicant, and all that later interpretation of the code inhibit any innovation or creativity. So, getting into the actual standards. The first proposal is to provide a variety of products. It is to create a different elevations facade that vary from paint color, elevations, so that we don't have the machi-machi all across the, in the street. The say, the follow, the next one is the garages. We are proposing that, you know, the, the garages be recessed, or overhang, or they will have overhangs, or that they have separate garage doors, entries. Garages that are side-loaded are, will be exempt from this provision. This is to avoid to have these big, huge garages in front on the facade, on the, on the principal facade of the, of the property. The driveway, if they are 60% more of the front yard, if it covers all that concrete, they will have to provide pavers. Sideways in the drap, in the driveway aprons within the right-of-way will have to comply with the existing requirements of the Land Development Code. That means that the pavers will not extend, extend into the sidewalks and into the apron. We're including requirements for massing and composition. The buildings will have elements that will break down the base metal on top, so it will break the eye when you look at it. All fa, all walls facing the street or public, or public right-of-ways will have the same treatment as the front facade. That means that if you have a corner lot, the house at the corner will have to have the same treatment as their principal facade. So, you know, in other words, it's going to be treated the same. It's going to pretend, prevent blank walls and reducing, and will have the inclusion of windows, the vertical elements that breaks the materials and changes into the elements. There's going to be provisions that they can provide to meet that requirement. We have included also requirements for windows, just to create a more attractive facade, and will be more appealing to the eye. Roof elements that also will create some sort of appeal to the facade. And they will have to provide educated storage at a minimum of 40 square foot, foot, to enclosed storage area. This is for properties that do not have a garage, or, or they have some sort of design that there don't have enough storage inside their garages, so they will have to provide that for their waste dumpsters, not dumpster, trash cans. And also, the air conditioning equipment to be screened and not visible. Now going into Article 8, this is in the landscaping code, we are making an amendment to Section 8.5, 8.5.2, and we're adding language that a minimum of 2 trees shall be required per residential lot. And in Section 8.5.11, we'll add in item number 14, that will read that all street trees must be maintained by the homeowner's association. These amendments, or these proposed amendments, meet the strategic plan goals of growth management, and it is that DRC recommended approval of the ordinance, and the Planning Commission meeting on March 15, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the ordinance, of the proposed ordinance. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
First of all, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lisa Clepper, and I live at 1752 up the road. I just had two, two little things. One, would the no-street parking in the residential areas unless otherwise posted, would that pertain to existing developments that are out there, or would this only be new ones? Because I, I know that in my neighborhood, they're parking, and it's like a game of Frogger to get through the neighborhood to get home. And then the other thing, just one comment, the roofing where it says aesthetically pleasing, that's very subjective. And so, what might look great to me might not look great to somebody else, so I don't know if you want to include a little bit more juice in that area. That was my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This, these amendments apply to new developments, and we're not going to make you change yours. Councilmember, anyone else in the house like to speak to this item? We'll have discussion, motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, the comment about the cars, we totally get. I mean, we've been fighting the on-street parking. What we call on-street parking is people parking in the road, not in a parallel parking space, or what? We've been fighting that for almost six years I've been up here, because it's terrible. Like, when you drive into the neighborhood. When I was just recently shopping for a home, I, like, didn't, I mean, a lot of neighborhoods I was interested in, I was like, "I can't take these cars. Like, I will lose my mind." Like, every time I come in out, so, we totally get that. I wanted to comment to you, I was told by a county official today that the county is, I guess, changing their codes to they're no longer allowing front garages on townhomes. Like, if townhomes are being built, the garages have to go on the back of the house, because they said they're tired of looking at this big expanse of, of driveway.
I, I thought it was any, any house less than a certain width, like even if it was...
There is, but townhomes, they're, it's like, they're, they said they're no longer allowing garages on the front, period.
Okay, good.
So, if we could look into that to see if that's something we wanted to do. I thought 60% of the front of the home having a driveway is a lot, even with pavers. That's a lot. Like, if they're going to have that kind of driveway, I think it needs to go on the back of the property, personally. And, and then I was curious, one of the comments on the presentation said something about structures that don't have garages? What structures aren't going to have garages? What are we envisioning that's not going to have a garage, or why would we allow that?
Well, may I? There have been some, some innovations into the construction design standards in other municipalities that they have brought products that are specifically for a specific population, such as retirees or very young family, not, old married couples or single, that the requirement of the garage is not so much necessary, and this also could apply for, for units, structures, that it will still be applied to the residential structure, but they will not have garages, they will have parking spaces.
So, then they're going to have to have four and a half parking spaces legit and not count garage, then?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Well, yeah, because that's what our code requires. But this gives the opportunity. But again, that's why we have the deviation portion of the code, that they can, if they can demonstrate that in the implementation of, the strict implementation of the code, will limit them for something innovative. will limit them for something innovative, then, of course, it gets to be approved by the code, and they have to demonstrate that they have parking in other areas to meet their other requirements of their parking, of the land development code.
Yeah, not having a garage makes me a little nervous, but I guess, I guess, we'll have to see what comes forward. I mean, because I'm just thinking, and, and everything owns on display at that point, you know, if they don't have a garage, but, so I'm not a hundred percent sold on that. But I wanted to bring something up to council while we were talking about this item, so I really appreciate you bringing this forward to get something in place, because I've been hollering about this for six years. But while I was having my gender review, we talked about, like, getting the full-blown architectural standards, and I was told the timeline, and it's next year, again, like, you know, so it's gonna be seven years I've been talking about this. So, we did talk about using consultant services to expedite it and get it on the fast track and get it back in here, which I completely support, but I need two of you others to join in, so we can give the city manager direction to expedite the architectural standards and get them back. Apparently, what was presented to us, whenever that was in a workshop two years ago, there's issues with it, and they need to work on it, so, did, did two other people say yes?
Before we, before we give our approval to that personally, I want, are there any issues with, that we don't, aren't aware of, that you're aware of, why, that would or would not be a good recommendation?
No.
That was his recommendation.
Yeah, that was my recommendation, so I can't, can't speak against it. We do have some bids out right now for contractual services to do that kind of work for us. As you know, our, our staff's overwhelmed with the growth we're experiencing right now, but yeah, we could do that.
Good.
I just want to set the expectation, what timeline are we looking at?
As fast as possible.
Okay.
We've been talking about it for so long, and I keep getting, like, kick the can, kick the can. I'm like, come on. Because I'm sure when we adopt it, we're gonna have to give a sixty-day notice or something to adopt it, so, you know.
Anyone opposed to that direction, too?
I think it's the, we need to update the entire land development code, because if you just update little bits and pieces like we're doing, it's just never gonna get done, right?
Well, we're never getting done, is the thing. We get tighter on the axle.
Well, I think we need to sign up a consultant for the, the whole, update the entire land development code.
I, I, I just want to get them in, and then if they need to be revised and updated in the land development code, that's fine. I think we just keep getting wrapped around the axle and not moving forward.
Yeah.
Looks like we got three.
No, we're good. And, and like I said, I hear you, Mr. Trace, and that's, that's part of the reasons we've been bringing these consults on, to get that stuff done, that land development code.
Yeah. Because once we, once we fix our code, then we don't have to talk about a lot of this stuff.
Correct.
I know, but we've been saying that for me for six years, so, like, let's get it going. The other thing is, once we do our, I guess, can we give this list to the county? Because when we had that meeting with the county, and we said we want better standards, and we want this, and they said, well, tell us what you want. I mean, this is a partial list of what we want, so can we provide this and say, it's the first reading? I assume it's gonna pass, I don't know, but, you know, and like, kind of get the conversation started with that as well?
As a matter of fact, the, what we're presenting tonight is the minimum requirements from the county assistance today. So, we're not, other than adding some minor details that we can squeeze in per, per the previous workshop, we, I can certainly share what we're proposing with the planning department in Osceola County, absolutely. And I, I'm gonna contact them about the townhome proposal. If I may add, we send this for review to the Chamber of Commerce, and we, I have, as of today, I have not received any comments, but they were very adamant when I communicated that this was going forward, that they would like to be involved when we come back with the, with the beefed-up ordinance of architecture.
Mr. Sturgis.
Thank you, Count, Mayor, Council. If you recall, back in budget, we put two hundred fifty thousand dollars in professional services in the council account, and I told you I wouldn't spend it unless I had your permission. Can I use that money to pay these consultants?
Yes, for me.
You can come back for the proposal, I mean, I don't know how much it is.
Yeah, yeah, we will, but I just want to earmark those funds for this, because like I said, we didn't budget for the other consultants, but, so we're not doing a budget amendment.
Just come back with the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Before we do, Councilmember Trace, are you done?
No, I have a question. What, did the planning commission give a reason why they recommended denial?
They did not. They did not give a reason why they denied. They made comments that they recognized that there is a need for these standards. They don't necessarily agree what we're presenting, because they're concerned that the additional requirements will be, the cost will be passed along to the new residents. But they didn't give any direction to staff of what they would like to see or anything like that.
Okay, so they just, it was mainly affordability was kind of the discussion?
Yeah, they brought in, they showed the missing middle and the affordable housing that we are trying to work so hard, and they made comments such as those.
Because, because part of that for me is the, the four and a half parking per unit, I mean, it's, now the only thing that's affordable is a townhome, and you have a sea of parking, two-car garage, all that, I mean, it's, a, a lot of folks that are kind of living in that situation don't have enough, you know, funds for two cars, or three cars, or four cars to park with that, so that's what, something I'd, I'd like looked into of almost putting in code different parking requirements for different things instead of our carte blanche, four and a half uni, spots per unit. But that's kind of beside the point. On Division eighteen, I like the fact that we have designated, instead of undesignated parking, is kind of what we're getting to, but on the areas that don't have parking, we almost need to make the pavement width less, or else people that are used to just parking on the side of the road are just gonna park there until they, their car gets hit or towed, or ticketed, or whatever. So, you know, if the road's narrower, and it doesn't seem like you can park on it, and then when it's wider and you have a parallel spot next to it, then you can park on it, would be something nice to, to kind of round out the, the non-designated parking. And then also, whenever we have to repave those streets, there is less pavement to repave, so it's, saves us money in the long run, and less in impervious area and all that with stormwater and everything. Good with that. Architectural standards are fine. And then, yeah, the, the driveway sixty percent pavers, I mean, if you have a fifty-foot wide lot, you've got to have a thirty-foot wide driveway, just seems like, to not have to do pavers, like, you almost shouldn't be able to have more than sixty percent of the front yard paved at all, regardless of what the surface is, let alone, it only has to be pavers, and you can pave the hundred percent of the front yard, it just, I don't think that would look right. But it would be nice, when we're going through this next time, to have some visual examples of, of what that would look like, on what, you know, is typically being built now. Same with the, the architectural, I, I appreciate the architectural elevations that were added to the presentation as well, just more examples of kind of everything we're talking about.
We have motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Councilmember Trace, Madam Clark.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number five.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero forty-seven R. A resolution to the City Council, the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty twenty-one dash Darrell two-two-three R, which adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget for the City of Saint Cloud, finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not to include the original twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said, said additional fundings in the various funds, making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Good evening, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, as in code section two-one-two, two-one-two amendments for adoption, that if any, at any time during the fiscal year, the manager is certifying that there are available appropriations and/or known as funds, revenues, in excess of those estimated. The City Council, by this resolution, may some, make supplemental appropriations for the next year in the amount of, of each access. The city manager has certified that these funds are available to appropriate such funds, and this budget amendment meets the strategic plan goal for financial sustainability. We are in reference to resolution number twenty twenty-two zero four seven R.
Wow. Can you growl? Can you growl every time you do R now?
Rar.
Rar.
Romeo.
It's not a cougar, it's a puma. Sorry, trying to get into the Saint Cloud way and let go of that Zulu alphabet. So, a growl it is. All right, let me get back. We are gonna go fund by fund for you on net increases, and those that are applied to those net increases. In the general fund, three million eighty-five thousand, six hundred forty-nine in increase. This was due to an increase in donation revenues in the fire prevention expenditures. We are recognizing fifteen hundred dollars for the Silver Spurs rodeo and Osceola High School Anglers Club donations for the Saint Cloud Cadet program. We are decreasing in that event city council contingency in order to ensure expenditures through intergovernmental transfers happen to capital projects. One is for fifty thousand in project management costs for project number PS two-one-zero-four, this is Fire Station Thirty-two. Continuing on in the three million dollar net increase, we are increasing prior year fund balance revenues through intergovernmental transfers. This expenditure is in a totality of two million nine hundred thousand. This is the general fund, funding project number PW two thousand for the downtown revitalization phase two. Bringing in the rear, increasing revenue through forfeits, contraband, seized assets in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one-four-nine, for funding received from the Osceola County Investigative Bureau, also known as the OCIB. We're decreasing city council contingency by two hundred and fifty thousand, eight fifty-one. This is to increase expenditures for operating supplies in the amounts of three hundred and thirty thousand, and maintenance contracts inc, maintenance contracts increase, sorry, in the amount of one hundred and five thousand for the new body worn camera taser systems for the police department. There is no net increase in the gas tax fund, this budget amendment, however, we are reallocating within the fund. We're increasing revenues in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five twenty-four through interfund transfers, and decreasing revenues from prior year fund balance in one hun, in the same amount of one twenty-five, five twenty-four. This is due to the completion and project, enclosure of project number ST two-one-oh-three, this is Fires Crow, Fires Crow Lane. This funding is being returned to our capital fund project, fund, fund number three hundred. In the one percent fund, also no net increase, that is zero net increase, however, we are reallocating revenues in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight oh-one, on both the revenue sides, as well as in prior year fund balance. This is, again, due to the completion of projects number PR nineteen-oh-two, the playground ballfields, and then project number nineteen-oh-seven for the traffic preemption, Station Thirty-two. Funding is, again, being returned to the capital fund, fund number three hundred. Further in the one percent fund, we're decreasing contingency expenditures and increasing intergovernmental transfers. This is for the capital projects expenditures by thirty-two thousand. This is for coverage on the expenditures that are upcoming for the management costs for project number PS two-one-oh-three, Fire Station Thirty-five. In the capital projects fund, bringing everything in and tying all the allocations that we have done from other funds, a total increase of ten million ninety-three thousand, nineteen dollars. We are increasing revenue on the interfund transfer and increasing project expenditures for professional services and contractual services for the following projects. PR twenty-two-oh-two, Hopkins Park, in the amount of a hundred thousand. ST twenty-two-oh-four, crosswalks and sidewalks for Lake Shore, in the amount of one fifty-two thousand. ST twenty-two-oh-five, again, Furtick Road Extension, in, for the amount of one million one hundred and fifty thousand. PS twenty-one-oh-three, PS one twenty-one-oh-four, for Fire Stations Thirty-five and Thirty-two, respectively, at thirty-two thousand and fifty thousand. PS twenty-one-ten, this is a temporary fire station cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand. PW two thousand, this is a downtime revitalization phase two, seven million one hundred and forty thousand, four eighty-five from all contributing funds for this project. PW twenty-two-oh-two, downtown parking garage, we are initiating the contributions for the parking garage, starting at seven hundred and eighteen thousand, five thirty-four. Decreasing revenue from prior year fund balance and decreasing expenditures, these are for all projects that either have been closed, moved, consolidated. BM two-one-zero-zero is your city hall atrium that is currently underway at three million eight hundred dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars. This was moved to fund number four sixty, also known as the building fund. We, after audit, were advised to transfer this to that enterprise fund to capture costs correctly, and we, this is that move. PR nineteen-oh-two, playground ballfields, three thousand three hundred and ninety-two, that's been completed. All of the following are completed. PS nineteen-oh-seven, traffic, traffic preemption, Station Thirty-two, in the amount of twenty-one thousand four oh-nine. ST twenty-one-oh-three, Friars' Crow, in the amount of one hundred twenty-five, five twenty-four. In the Parks Impact Fee Fund, zero net increase overall. We are increasing interfund transfers by a hundred thousand dollars and decreasing contingency in expenditures by a hundred thousand as well. There is your net zero increase for PR twenty-two-oh-two, Hopkins Park Master Plan. Fire Impact Fee Fund, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in interfund transfer expenditure from prior year fund is where we're getting the revenue from, at seven hundred and fifty to pro, to fund, project number PS two-one-one-zero, Temporary Fire Station, as you recall, is being paid out of the capital fund, and this is the, the revenue towards that. Mobility Fund, Impact Fee, one million dollar increase. This is from, coming from prior year fund balance revs in the amount of a million to increase expenditures by two million three oh-two, and decrease contingency expenditures by one million three oh-two, three hundred and two thousand, for project number ST twenty-two-oh-four, Crosswalks on Lake Shore, that's a reduction of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, Furtick Road Extension, again, a million one fifty, and PW two thousand Downtown Revitalization, one million dollars. In the Water Fund, the contribution of one million dollars is being funded through prior year fund balance. This is through intergovernmental transfers for the expenditure to provide the cost for water-related funding for the project for the downtown revitalization phase two, also known as PW two thousand. In the Sewer Fund, likewise, a million dollars increase in prior year fund balance revenues, a million dollars in expenditures. This is providing funding for the PW two thousand Downtown Revitalization Phase Two. We are decreasing also contingency expenditures and increasing contractual services by three hundred and thirty thousand for WA two-one-one-two, Lake Shore Trail Utility Relocation. In the Building Permit Fund, this is the three million eight hundred for the BM twenty-one hundred, or City Hall Atrium, as you recall. This is funded in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We are transferring over to the Capital Projects Fund, and this is through the auditor's recommendation of funding directly from the building, building permit fee fund, also known as fund number four sixty. Sanitation Impact Fund, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred increase. This is from prior year fund balances. We're decreasing contingency in expenditures by two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred, increasing expenditures for the purpose of machinery and equipment by six hundred and fifty thousand. This is for the purchase of an additional side loader truck and an additional semi-truck trailer to accommodate for the additional route and associated refuge transportation to the landfill. In the CRA Fund, we're increasing revenue through prior year fund balance by one million one hundred and eighteen, five hundred and thirty-four, increasing those expenditures through interfund transfers by seven hundred and eighteen, five thirty-four, to reserve the initial funding, as I mentioned before, for project number PW twenty-two-oh-two, also known as a downtown parking. We're gonna increase those expenditures for aids to private organizations by four hundred thousand dollars. Staff is recommending approval for resolution twenty twenty-two zero four seven R. City Council's requested action through this resolution is for also approval of the resolution number twenty twenty-two zero four seven R.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have any kind of public comment regarding this item. Augusta Odom, you requested to speak to this item. Good to see you, Gus. Glad you're hobbling around real good.
Getting better.
Glad you got that leg, uh, knee fixed.
Yes, sir, me too. But now neither of them are fixed. How's everyone? Thank you. Just want to say to the city council, I know y'all know that we got problems out there with Hopkins Park, and we desperately need some, something done out there. We have a water situation in the park where we go park, when it rains a lot, water stands, and people parks out there, and some people come in there, and it tears up the ground. The water just not making its way out to the, to the ditch, you know, to runoff. We was told a while back that the city, that the parking record race was gonna do something about it, and it hasn't been done yet. And we also are concerned about our building, you know, which is small. We have a lot of children, and we started growing out there. Y'all... Y'all know that the townhomes are being built next door, which is going to, you know, probably bring in a lot more children, you know? And so we just, you know, we need something done, and we are calling on this council, you know, to help us. I've noticed this right here on here, the 100,000 being spent on that for the design of something. When is that to take place?
You have any other questions?
Yes.
If you'll just state all your questions, and we'll go back and answer them all, okay?
Okay. Also, and inside the perimeter of the whole building, you know, the city's wall, the wooden wall over there, that belongs to the city, that belongs to the residents. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sturgeon, we can give him an update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have to find out about the wall, but Mr. Edwards just completed a design to fix the issues in the parking lot with the flooding issue we're having. And I also want to tell you that the master planning sessions will start in May. Full community involvement with that, get the community feedback on that. It's always been my vision to improve that part. It is an underserved part of our community. So we're going to look at the drainage system as a whole. I'd like a vision to have a new community center, a community pool, and gymnasium in that area. We're probably looking at about a two to three year build out and probably do it in phases, but it starts with the community involvement in that master plan, and we're committed to doing that. I've given staff direction that this is a priority for the city. And thank you, Gus, for coming up tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I can assure you that we certainly care about what's happening at Hopkins Park. That's the reason for the master plan. You know, we just don't want to go out and start doing things without a master plan knowing where we're going to go, so that's the reason we're making investments, so we can have a master plan to give us guidance and direction. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I like a master plan, but I just want to double check that the drainage situation is going to be addressed now, though?
Correct, yes. I want to clarify. Yes, ma'am.
So we'll at least fix that problem while we're doing the other things, so, great.
And I think I had one more thing, and you guys know this. Right next to the building, there's a lift station. I've already started talking to Mr. Swingle at Toho and with Marjorie about getting that moved as part of that master planning process, that'd give us more room, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. Ms. Claus, do you, just off the top of your head, know how much we have in the park impact fee fund? Ballpark, not to the penny?
About 5 million.
About 5 million, okay. Because it's one of those of like, this is a great area to spend that, right? Because of the growth around it, and we have the money in the bank. So, I mean, I'm fine with phasing it, especially because you don't want to tear up the whole thing at once, but we've got the money in the bank to spend it in an area that desperately needs it.
And I believe they put it on your strategic plan in your workshop as a priority in there, and we gave it the green light as probable.
Yeah, okay. On the Furtick Road Extension, that's for the design and construction?
Design.
Just design? Like, what section of Furtick?
I don't have the section to tell you. I don't have that.
It's the section that comes off Canoe Creek, Mr. Trace. Does that make sense?
At least.
Yes.
So would it go Canoe Creek to Michigan?
Yes.
Okay. Because that makes more sense. I was thinking it was just that section between whatever that new neighborhood is there and Michigan, and it's only like 1,000 feet. Like, a million dollars to design 1,000 feet is out of realm, but...
And that is correct, sir. It is Canoe Creek to Michigan.
Right.
Okay.
And I think that cost is also construction, right?
A portion of it, not fully.
Okay, not fully, okay.
Madam Clerk, are you wanting to speak to this discussion?
Yes, I have a citizen that has submitted an email for the record for speaking to get toward the children at play at the Hopkins Park. So this email is from Eumica Williams. She said she's a resident at 1435 River Road, St. Cloud. First, she would like to know when should we, as a community, expect the start of construction on the new building and parking at Hopkins Park? This has been going on for well over 15 years, and the official start of the project would be great to see and not just heard. Second, we have no signs in this area nor near Hopkins Park to reflect that indeed we have children in and around this community, and this is a major concern to myself and several other residents. Can this be updated and when? Third, there is a serious problem with parking from the towing and collision company causing issues with the flow of traffic coming in and out of this area. I realize this is a public parking, but at the same time, we want to avoid all unnecessary accidents and/or issues pertaining to this. Thank you in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I've directed staff to put the children at play signs in. Secondly, address the parking issue. That's going to code enforcement to take a look at what's going there with the towing company. And then, like I said, you know, it's going to take a couple of years to actually start the shovels in the ground, but we'll get the planning process going and get this done.
On the sanitation impact fee fund, were those vehicles being purchased from the impact fee fund, or were those funds being moved into it to purchase them?
No, they're being bought from the impact.
Okay. They're just confused the way it was in here. And then, my general gripe with the 750,000 for a temporary fire station, that I'd rather just put that into the full blown real one, so I want to voice that. I'd rather it done sooner rather than later. If we can go a different procurement process with it, it's fine with me if we...
Mayor, can I have the fire chief address that?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Jason Miller, Fire Chief. As you know, we are rapidly getting close to the award of the Safer Grant. Realistically, with timeframes for construction bidding and processes, there's no way to actually build a hardened station in time for this Safer Grant award. I'm extremely confident we're going to receive this award, just based off of our growth, our response, postures, and everything else. Along with that, we just recently had a construction cost estimate done on one of our projects, and they're coming back at 550 dollars a square foot.
Oof.
Ouch. When we were initially talking about this project, starting a year ago, shortly after I became Fire Chief, if you remember when I sat here, I said construction costs were running 250 to 300. So I say that because, yes, this is a temporary fire station, but as soon as we're done with it and have it placed, which our partners at Tohoku have given us a parcel that we'll be able to set it up while we're able to still clear and mitigate the property over on the other side where we're going to build, they're doing a dollar a year lease for us to help us out there. As soon as it's done, we plan on moving it to the next future site for a fire station. So this building will get recycled at least two to three times in the near future. It's going to be hurricane rated for, I believe, 165 mile an hour winds. Take that for what it's worth. I don't really trust modulators, but they say they can rate it for 165 or 135. I can't remember which off the top of my head. They are on a contract, so we're not going to have to go out and do a hard construction bid or anything like that. And again, we will be under a time crunch if we're awarded that Safer Grant. We have 180 days to bring those people on board, and with the current market conditions and the people that are bidding on jobs, we'll be lucky to get enough vendors to bid on our projects in that time period.
Thank you. Any other discussion, my counsel?
I just hope we can stay ahead of it to where we really only have to use it once instead of just planning on putting the temporary, because temporary becomes permanent, especially when things start getting costing more and more.
That would be why I have a term lease on the property.
Yeah, exactly.
This is our deal.
Ms. Claus, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution 2022-047R?
Motion to approve.
We have motion from Councilmember Askew. Do you want to have a second? Mayor gives a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to council action, item number one.
Resolution Number 2022-060R, a resolution to the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing city manager to enter into a task authorization to contract an agreement for architectural engineering services for the new fire station with Song and Associates, Inc., dated December 16, 2021, and any amendments thereto for new St. Cloud Fire Department Fire Station 32, and providing an effective date.
Mayor?
Yes.
Question first, please. Can we give Ms. Matheny a minute before she comes back? She needs to hear this deliberation.
That'll be fun.
Thank you, sir.
Do we get hold music?
I could do Jeopardy, maybe.
Somebody had some cool music earlier.
I know, he usually plays good music. So you're going to have to sing, Jay, or Chief.
Oh, you do not want me to sing.
No, they don't want him to sing, no.
I mean, it's bad enough, the sunburn glare on my forehead coming off right now, so I'm surprised you guys can even see up there.
Wheels on a bus go runnin' round.
No, no. Maybe everybody's hero, I don't know. Too many police in the room to say that, though. We could always have the finance director come back up and sing Roar.
I think she was trying to say Romeo.
Yeah.
It's okay. It's okay. It's our secret language.
Yeah.
You need new auto parts?
Yeah, let me see. Do you have lights in there? Or power in there?
Yeah.
Should make sure it's safe for you.
Yeah.
Or I guess you can't get any more.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I want, I gotta get a couple of big D and R fires in there, but I'm not doing any of them until this first contract's done.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Whoa, you can give him five, six months, eight to thirteen?
Yeah. Smart to get thirty days, so it's getting ready to go.
Oh, and if it didn't require, you say seven days, I would say.
So your dad lets you do the...
Are you working on stuff?
Yeah, he wants to, like, maybe show me stuff. Why you already have that ice machine?
Well, he's talking about walking through it. He's got all this stuff.
I can take your liquor, put it in, have your dad build him something in the hallway. Totally freeze up that space there, get the ice machine out, and put another freezer in there. Work with that. Low cost. Get yourself a...
Well, get those like drop-ins, really, so people just have...
I don't know, does he do it at your... He doesn't, yeah, but that's what he was talking about, too. Really nice guy, really got the drive.
Is he doing the thing on the west side of that, like, the semi?
Yeah, he's the manager.
Okay. Oh, so he's not the owner?
No, he's, but he's, as far as I'm aware, he told me, but he's also accordionist for Disney. Disney's accordion, one, two, or three. But, yeah, he was like, why don't you take the whole thing, and that'd be great.
He, Brian, has, so, now I guess it's... No, it's not. It's actually getting worse.
Really?
I have an appointment with a cardiologist Monday, my heart doctor. I have to have an exam by her to see if, to get a clearance for her to have surgery. Hopefully, get a clearance Monday and all, so...
He was kind of the...
They said it would take one to two weeks to set a date. I'll see, just...
Sorry to hear that.
My frustration is headed right into Easter night. Easter's a really big day, and I got to speak to that car.
She's got stuck. He looks at me, goes, there's a 20-inch footer on the wall. It was a federal...
All right. All right. We're back to resolution... We're back to Resolution 2022-060R.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jason Miller, Fire Chief. Resolution 22-060R is for the award to Song Associates for the Architect and Engineering for Fire Station 32. As you know, that station is a small metal butler building, fire station. It was built in 1992, 93-ish. Had some various issues with the building over time, and quite frankly, the building needs to be replaced. The living conditions out there are troublesome at best. The reason this is before you this evening is, is it was part of the budget amendment that just became before you. It came back as a cost estimate of 13,004 more dollars than what was originally budgeted. We're seeking approval. With this approval, I also would like to caution you, as we were briefly talking a moment ago, about the cost of construction going on right now. From some industry experts that I've talked to recently, they're expecting a 20% jump in the next two years. I am starting to get terribly afraid that we're going to start losing some of these public safety infrastructure facilities that we need to include a comm center, a new EOC fire stations. I know it's a bad word, but I would strongly hope and look that we are looking towards the future and potentially even bonding some of these items out. I'm afraid that costs are going to continue to escalate. We don't know what's going to happen over in Europe, and I'm starting to get a little nervous of what the future holds for us, so. With that, again, I'm seeking approval for Song Associates to do the architect and engineering. This is the same firm that did the architect and engineering for Fire Station 35, which we're planning on doing basically a beefed up version of that fire station. The plan will be to rinse and repeat the floor plan design. However, it will have to be reengineered, rearchitected, if there's any changes to the soil substrate based off of soil warings. So assuming life goes well, that should hopefully save some costs in the future, because we'll just be taking that floor plan, the look at the soil samples, restamp it, and move forward.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion. Enter motion, my counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion from Councilmember Askew, second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. The next appointment we have is for the Historic Preservation Board, and that is an at-large position. And we have four applicants.
Councilmember Matheny?
I have a question on the three, the first three. There's no jobs or background listed. Do we know what those are?
On their applications, it would state what they are. The only one that would, that meets one of those is the historian, and that's why that's highlighted.
Because we have pretty elaborate criteria for this one.
Have any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion for Patrice Campbell.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew and a second, Councilmember Matheny, for Patrice Campbell. Are there any other nominations? If not, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. The next board we have is the Tree Advisory Committee. Alternate number two is vacant, and that's an at-large appointment, and we have three applicants. And we have four applicants.
Councilmember Matheny?
I have a question on the three, the first three. There's no jobs or background listed. Do we know what those are?
On their applications, it would state what they are. The only one that would, that meets one of those is the historian, and that's why that's highlighted.
Because we have pretty elaborate criteria for this one.
Have any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion for Patrice Campbell.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew and a second, Councilmember Matheny, for Patrice Campbell. Are there any other nominations? If not, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The next board we have is the Tree Advisory Committee. Alternate number two is vacant, and that's an at-large appointment. And we have three applicants.
I'll make a motion for Rosa Cruz.
I'll make a second. Do we have any other nominations? We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for Rosa Cruz.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The last committee we have is the Zoning Board of Adjustment. There are two vacancies, seat number one and seat number six. They're both at large, and I would ask to have nominations on both seats and then one motion.
Okay. Well, this is not hard. I'll make a motion for Matthew Boggs for seat number one, and George Mathis for seat number six.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Do we have any other nominations? Councilmember Matheny?
So it says in the criteria that there's two alternates, so there's not a seat six and seven, right? Those are alternate one and two? The reason I'm asking, if that's an alternate, Julian Gilmer, I'd like to move them up into a voting position.
I would have to look at the criteria.
Yeah, that's generally how it is, so.
But it says alternates down here, but then it says seats one through seven, so I guess I just.
So what you're suggesting is the alternate position be appointed to seat one?
Yes. If that is an alternate, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's, we could, you can.
I have no problem with amending that, that we move Julian Gilmer up to seat number one, Matthew Boggs, seat number six, and George Mathis would be seat number seven, and our understanding is those two seats would be alternates.
Yes, sir.
I have that as a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Any other nominations? Seeing there are none, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you for that.
Mr. Benzeris?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One item, as you know, the one million dollar appropriation from the state legislature is in the budget, and I'd like permission to have the mayor sign a letter to the governor to encourage him to not veto that. And secondly, to thank Representative Hawkins and Senator Torres for their sponsorship and championing that program.
Do we have a consensus? Is anyone objecting to me begging for him to approve that? I mean, asking him to please approve that?
And I want to point out that Police Chief stood through the whole meeting.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Trace?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Askew?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
That's for me, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny, you gonna make it a?
No, I can't do it!
Councilmember Matheny?
I just wanted to say kudos to the city staff for coming up with a brand-new, you know, parade idea, the light-up parade for St. Patrick's Day.